And now the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kristin Rush, will you call the role of the current council?
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Ferre. Councilmember Pfeifer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Mr. Pfeifer.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Ferre from tonight's meeting.
You'd think after 24 years I would know how to run the board. Mr. Mormon, Ms. Simpson, Mr. Marriott, if you'll vote again. Thank you. All votes cast. That passes six to zero. Ms. Ferre is in approved absence.
Your honor, I have no response.
I just wanted to let you know that Ms. Ferre is available on Zoom. So if you'd like for her to appear on Zoom, she is available to do so.
Well, let's certainly have her do so, and we'll withdraw her excused absence. Hello, Ms. Ferre. What time is it?
I don't think I'm gonna miss this.
What time is it there?
It's two in the morning. But luckily, I have a child that keeps me up, so I'm good.
You know, tonight is a very special night. We've got some scouts in the room tonight, and I commented to a couple of them that what they get to see tonight is how things are done right. This is how we handle things here in the United States in terms of having elections instead of having, you know, as used to happen in the medieval times where there would be wars and there would be hostile takeovers and things of that nature. Here we have elections, and people are allowed to have their opportunity to present their points of view. I have such huge respect for anybody that runs for office. To have your name put on the ballot and to put yourself out there, it takes a lot of courage and willingness to subject yourself to some slings and arrows at times. But it's very rewarding, and it's something that you're gonna hear a little bit more about tonight. But it's nice to see the peaceful transition of power when there's a changeover. I'm not being thrown out with pitchforks and torches, nor is Mr. Jones. We're leaving voluntarily, and it's our pleasure to have served. So with that, we're going to begin with some comments for Mayor Protem David Jones, who has served this community for the last eight years. Mr. Jones, you've got the floor.
Thank you. Yeah, as the mayor said, it's one of those things that anyone who has served in a public office like this, it's a special experience because it's a vote of the people. And it's the people of Arvada who have allowed me for the... My kids have a bet whether or not I'm gonna make it through this, but...
They'll win.
They did. But it's the citizens of Arvada who've allowed me to serve in this capacity for the last eight years, and for that I'm grateful. I want to thank the city of Arvada, the team, the people who sit and occupy those seats there are the people that truly run the city. And their teams that we don't see on a day-to-day basis are the ones who are making sure that we have the services that we expect as citizens of this great city. And so I'm so thankful for each and every member of the leadership team and for the work and the effort that they give every single day for us, for the citizens of Arvada. That's the part I'm gonna miss the most, are the people that sit there. I want to thank our police department, the men and women who serve our city and put themselves out in front of everything good and everything bad to keep this a place that we can live in and be safe in. I'm so grateful for them, and I know that the councils that come behind me will continue to support them because I think that's an important part of a city service. So thank you to all the men and women who are sworn and unworn and serve in the tech positions and those that are taking care of the animals. Thank you for what you do every day for our city. There's a few that I want to talk about specifically or thank specifically. But I'll start, since I was with the police, I'll start with our police chiefs. I've had the distinct honor and pleasure to serve with three chiefs here in Arvada. Chief Don Wick, who is now Deputy City Manager, Chief Link Straight, and now our current Chief Ed Brady. These men are amazing men, and I'm honored to have been able to serve with them in this capacity and get to know them and see them work in the community day in and day out. They truly are special men to me. Thank you very much. Municipal Judges, David Cook and our current Judge Kurtz. I almost dropped the judge part, and I thought I needed to keep this formal. But it's been such an honor to work with you over the last couple of years and to see what you've done with our courts and with our people and allowing the people of Arvada who might run into one of our police officers to have a fair chance, to have a voice. And so thank you for giving them that voice and that opportunity. Our city attorneys, Chris Daly, who was our previous city attorney and now Rachel Morris. Rachel, thank you from the bottom of my heart, especially for these last two years. Serving as Mayor Protem, you have kept me on track and have set me up for success on the nights when our good mayor wasn't here. The scripts, everything that you did to prepare me is amazing, and thank you so much for making sure I didn't fail. Now to our city managers. Mark Devon, and I don't know if Mark's here, but is an amazing man. And I'm so glad that I had the opportunity to serve with Mark and to work with Mark and to see the passion that he brought to our city. And now to have Lori Gillis, who Mark paved the path so perfectly for transition. And as we went through our process to select a new city manager, it was clear for me that Lori Gillis was the absolute right choice. And Lori, I thoroughly appreciate you and the sacrifices that you make on a daily basis on behalf of this city and on behalf of this council. You have a really, really hard job. You manage seven very distinct personalities, and you do it with grace. So thank you for your friendship. Thank you for being there every single day, for answering our calls and emails and texts and never wavering, but just being stalwart in your direction. I'm not worried because I know you're here. Thank you very much. Now to a few other council members that I got the opportunity to serve with. Mr. Don Allard, Mark McGough, the man, the myth, the legend. If you know Mark McGough, you know. Amazing man. I'm so happy for the opportunity that we got to serve together in your wisdom and understanding and knowledge of the city. I was worried when you termed out because of that, we've lost all this knowledge. But Mark, you're just a great person. I'm so glad that I had the opportunity to serve with you. Nancy Ford and Dot Miller were the other council members that I got to serve with in addition to these. Now, I promise I'm not gonna go that much longer, but I will. But now to my friends who I've had the opportunity to serve with for these last few years. I've got to see you in action in this setting and in multiple settings. I've got to see what makes you tick and what makes you happy and what makes you sad. But as I thought about how to describe each of you, I came up with a word for each of you. There were a lot of words I thought of. Some were appropriate, some were not. But so I've got just a couple of words and a couple of things about each one of you. Mr. Pfeifer, motivated. You put energy towards hopeful outcomes. You're driven, you influence, and you push, and that's what I love most about serving with you. Mr. Mormon, supportive. Provide emotional support and encouragement to others. You're reassuring and sympathetic. You've ensured everyone has accessibility throughout this city. Mayor-elect, is that the right terminology? Mayor-elect Simpson, empathetic. Willing and able to view situations from the perspective of others. Compassionate, sympathetic, and understanding. Ms. Ferre, at 2:00 AM. You're dynamic, upbeat, full of new ideas, energetic, vigorous, and always looking for an angle to create something. Always looking for an angle to create something. Mr. Marriott, practical. You're focused on what is sensible and useful. Pragmatic, mindful of the results, the usefulness, advantages or disadvantages. Thank you for your friendship and your mentorship. I really appreciated the opportunity to serve with you. To our mayor. There are a lot of words to describe our mayor. There are a lot of really, really good words to describe our mayor. But the two that came to mind immediately were trustworthy and brave. You are genuine, you're dependable, you're reliable, you're honorable, and you're willing to do hard things. And you've done hard things during your time on council. I've thoroughly appreciated your mentorship, your leadership, and your friendship for these last eight years. You're someone I look up to, and I truly appreciate the fact that you've put yourself out there for all of these many years, these 24 years, but specifically these last 12 as our mayor. You've done a lot of really great things. Thank you. My hope going forward for our new mayor and our council is that you'll continue to take care of the city that I grew up in. During the first election that I ran in 2015, I commented about the little white house behind Eckerd's, or not behind Eckerd's, behind Wright's Nursery, which is still there today. That was the house that I came home from, from the hospital, from Lutheran Hospital. So this has been my town for more than a century, half a century, sorry. Half a century. It feels like a century, a century under, half a century underwater. But this has been my town for a long time, and it's a place that I love. And it's a place that I deeply care about, which is why I made the decision to run eight years ago. I'm making the decision to step away for one very special reason, and that's my family. Because without my family, I couldn't have done this for eight years. My dear sweet wife, who was a constant companion, friend, confidant, and worst critic. She was the one who would make sure that the things that needed to get done got done. She is an amazing woman. But now that my boys are adults, Jake was 15 and Parks was 12 when I started, but now that they're adults and productive citizens, it's time now for me to spend time with my wife and my family. They sacrificed a lot. Your families sacrifice a lot for you to serve on council. And I couldn't do it without them. They are my life. They are my everything. And I love them dearly. And Maddie, she's my daughter through girlfriend. I love you, Maddie. Thank you for your love and support as well. This has truly been a huge honor for me to serve and to sit in this seat, to sit on this dais, to sit with these people and to make decisions on your behalf. I'll leave you with this. Trust is earned in the smallest of moments. It's earned not through heroic deeds or even highly visible actions, but through paying attention, listening, and gestures of genuine care and connection. Thank you very much.
Ms. Simpson.
Thank you so much for that. So David, I have two words for you: kind and steadfast. I will say when I was first elected four years ago, you were absolutely one of the first ones that welcomed me to offer, to provide me any advice. And thank goodness you did. For anyone who might remember, I sat in that seat over there, and David was in the far seat. So quite often I would lean over with a question, in particular about District Four, and be like, "Okay, what is this?" And David would very patiently answer with me every time. He would guide me, never a judgment, never a eye roll. And even on contentious issues, one of my favorite memories of sitting on this dais was, believe it or not, the night of the trash vote. That was not my favorite memory. However, during the night of the trash vote, we had, what was it, four hours, five hours of public testimony? And they were coming at us rapid-fire when the staff was reading them. And David and I were trying to keep up, and I remember leaning over and going, "Okay, which one was that one, four against?" And he's like, "I don't know. I can't keep up." And we were trying to keep a tally running. And it's what made five hours of that fun. And it was still important. We were still listening to the residents. But it made it fun to kind of have that little laughter back and forth of that shared crazy situation. And you have always been incredibly steadfast. You are strong and you are thoughtful, but you are never a bully. You never force yourself onto others in terms of your opinions or your way of doing things. You hold strong. It doesn't matter how hard the wind is blowing, and I tremendously respect that about you. You are empathetic in your own ways, and you are thoughtful. You have always embraced everyone as they have come for exactly who they are. And thank you so much for serving with us, for being our friend. And I look forward for all the great things you're gonna do, and I might actually watch like the Indy 500 just for you.
Mr. Mormon.
David, it's been such a pleasure to be serving with you these past few years. And a couple of words come to my mind. The first is Statesman. I remember two years ago, right after this night of swearing in, you and your family were the first to come up to me, welcome me with open arms. And I just so appreciated that from day one with you. You know, we may not always have agreed on things, but I just so appreciated your approach, your thoughtfulness. And you never raised your voice, you never showed any, you know, anger. And I really genuinely believe that everything you had to say came from the heart. It was honestly how you felt, and there was no other agenda. There was no one else that was really influencing you but truly what you believed. And I just have so much respect for that, and I really hope that I can take what I've learned from working with you these past two years and continue that on. So thank you so much.
Mr. Pfeifer.
Boy, Randy just stole exactly what I wanted to say.
Well, then you don't have to say it. That's good.
Ditto. I'm trying to watch the time because that was like a 20-minute speech. I will just add to what Randy said. I absolutely agree with everything Randy said. Is, you know, when you look at somebody and you wonder kind of what footprints they leave in the world and where they're going and so forth, one moment in time really made me realize the character you are. And it's during Chief Brady's civility presentation. When he goes to the end and he talks about the people that have the most compassion, and he named you, specifically you. And I think if anyone knows the civility, that he does a great job talking about civility. And you relate his story to that ending, it just inspires me or inspires me, either both ways of the person I can aspire to be. And if I could just do 10% of that to leave that image, I think I'll be a better person. So I just thank you for the last eight years. I think I might have known your brother before you. But your family's great. The things you've done for the city has been top shelf in the Statesman. It was the word I was gonna use as well. I've seen you in very difficult situations, and you handle them with dignity and pride and respect and an absolute positive reflection on our community and our city. So I'm sure we'll still run across each other. I still want to ride in the new car, so you owe that to me.
Ms. Ferre, you don't have a button to push, but would you like to say anything?
No, I just wanted to say thank you for your service. Pretty simple.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you. So I want to, David, also thank you for your service, but particularly want to thank the things you brought to the Arvada City Council. You know, we on council were so lucky to have somebody with your business sense, your acumen, and your experience to serve with us. Something that I think is very rare in this arena, that we have people who are CEO quality of people to bring that point of view to the city council. And I think we were stronger because of it, and I think it was a very important thing. But that's not the most important thing that you brought. You know, as another person who grew up here in Arvada, as you did, I think you brought this overall sense of where we've been and where we're going. And we're able to bring that forward on all issues, small and large. And particularly in the contentious issues, you were able to do it with such kindness and thoughtfulness to all the rest of us and all the points of view in the room. And I really think, you know, you're one of a kind. You're definitely one of a kind in this arena. And we will miss you greatly. And I can't say enough how much I appreciated serving with you, learning from you, and being friends with you. And that part doesn't end tonight, and I'm looking forward to many, many, many more years of being friends. So thank you.
David, I've said this in the past, and I mean it as much tonight as ever. You are the moral compass of the city council. Your qualities, your belief system, your ethics are second to none. You are a dynamic person. I echo everything that's been said. Couldn't have said it better. That's the problem with being mayor. You tend to go last, so all the good things have already been said. But David and I have had an opportunity to email each other a little bit and share some of our personal thoughts. I want to thank your family. I know the sacrifices they all made to give you the opportunity to do this, this last eight years. And the love you have for them is so, so obvious. I think it's a big part of why you are who you are. So with that, Mr. Jones, in grateful recognition of your dedication, commitment, and service to the Arvada community, will present you this plaque as a council member of District Four from 2015 to 2023. I guess it's my turn. I've had the distinct pleasure of serving with this group of council members and had had the opportunity to share some private comments with each of them separately. And like David, reflect back on the number of council members I had the pleasure to serve with over the past 24 years. Like David, I've had the benefit of serving with both Mark Devon and now Lori Gillis, but even going back further to Craig Koshen in my first 12 years on council. And I agree with what David has said, that the city is in very capable hands with you, Lori Gillis, for being our city manager. It's a tough, tough job, and you do it with such great skill. You hit the ground running. It's drinking from a fire hose, but you're drinking from it quite well. So keep up with that. And Rachel Morris, you're doing a terrific job. I know it's tough having a mayor who's an attorney, but hopefully I wasn't looking over your shoulder too much. And Judge Kurtz, we're thrilled to have you here as well. You know, it's been quite a run for the three of you so far, and I know that you'll continue to do great work. I'm grateful for all the city employees who worked for the city or who have worked for the city during my tenure here. These employees are the heart and blood of what makes the city tick so well. They are tireless in terms of the work they do, and they truly have the city's best interests at heart. I didn't ask Kristin Rush to go back through this to figure out how many city council meetings I've been a part of, but it's well over 1,000 that I've sat up at this dais in every single seat up here over those years, over those 24 years. This one's rather unique, and Ms. Simpson, you're about to find that out. I've heard from other mayors, and I've told this to this council and to others, that they just, other mayors can't figure out why Arvada moves so well. And it's because of the quality of people we have sitting up here. It's because of how well we work together. And so I've done, trying to keep it in a light vein, I've come up with, for the new mayor and council, indulge me if you will, I've got some thoughts and perhaps some unsolicited advice as you assume your roles. Here's my top 10 list. Number 10, do the people's business in these chambers. Before I came on council, back in the dark ages, there were times where decisions got made before people walked into this room. And there would be council members who would come in here and find out that they were on the wrong side of a vote that they never got to have a participation in. That's never happened in my 24 years. It certainly hasn't happened in the last 12. And I urge you to continue to do the people's business in this room. Number nine, take what you're doing seriously, but don't take yourselves too seriously. And I think I'm Exhibit A for that. To quote my good friend Frank Barone, "Don't acquire the blue chair mentality." Now, these chairs aren't blue anymore, but they used to be blue. And there were some people in the past who perhaps thought that once they sat in these seats, they were all powerful and all-knowing, and the seats don't have those powers. Number eight, read your packet. Be prepared. Get your boots on the ground and view the sights that you'll be making decisions on. There's nothing better you can do than to do that. Number seven, respect the city team. Ask the appropriate questions. Don't rubber stamp, but know that the professionals that work for you have the city's best interests at heart. Number six, listen to and respect the input of our citizens, especially the ones who didn't vote for you, because their input is important too. Number five, and you've heard this from me frequently, disagree agreeably. Listen to and respect the opinions of your fellow council members, and we've always done that so well. And I urge the future council to do the same. Number four, remember the primary responsibilities of municipal government first and foremost: our roads, our utilities, and public safety. That's what we're really here for, and that's what we need to do first. Number three, speaking of public safety, always remember the sacrifice of our police officers, most recently Gordon Beasley and Dylan Baikoff. Their sacrifice and loss will stay with me forever. Stand with our police each and every day, and I know you will. Number two, keep local politics local and nonpartisan. Don't let what has happened at the national and state level interfere with what you do here. We see the national dialogue. We see what's happening at that level. And it's so important that we tend to our knitting here. You've heard me say it before. I still say it. There are no Republican, Democrat, or independent potholes, water lines, sewer lines. Stay focused on those nonpartisan issues. And number one, make time make time for your family. They're your greatest cheerleaders and support system. I've been blessed to have Luanne, our four children, and great-grandchildren, our grandchildren, no great-grandchildren yet.[613.16][613.16][laughter] Four of the grandkids are here tonight. My brother and sister are here. I lost both of my parents during my time as mayor, which everyone who's lost parents knows this, it's tough, tough times. And my brother and sister drove out from Illinois to be with me this last week, and it's been so special to have that family. And I often joke that our parents were the quintessential warden June Cleaver, and there's no question, but that the things that my parents taught me have really served me well these last 24 years. And having kids who are willing to go out on the campaign trail with you to be your support system is certainly priceless. And to have someone like Luanne, who has been, as David has described his wife, mine is likewise my biggest supporter and at times appropriate critic, but who is there every step of the way. I can't tell you the impact that losing two police officers has on all of us sitting up here. And to have Luanne there for me each and every minute of going through that time in my life was invaluable. And to have, she is such a rock and such a, as I've said in the past, she's a rock star in her own right. And we've made a heck of a power couple here for, now coming up on 27 years in January in terms of wedded bliss. So with that, it will be my honor to pass the gavel to Mayor Lauren Simpson tonight with my congratulations and wishes that she be able to preside over the same quality of council as we have always enjoyed here. Ms. Simpson.
I think you forgot number .5. Don't forget to shower with a friend.[734.32][734.32][laughter]
Thank you. Okay, with that, it is now time. You've got something there?
I've got something here that I need to do, but I don't have the agenda in front of me. You do. So with that, I'd also like to present Mayor Mark Williams in grateful recognition of your dedication, commitment, and service to the Arvada community as a council member-at-large from 1999 to 2011, and as mayor 2011 to 2023. Thank you, Mayor, for And before you sit down, well, you can sit down, before you sit down, I've got one last thing here, which is a gift from the city team and council for you. And we hope that you enjoy a couple of rounds of golf on us.
Thank you.
I guess this is where?
This is where you and I exit?
Exit stage left. Hey, hold on real quick. I feel like we're out of order a little bit. I have a few words.
Ms. Pfeiffer, go ahead.
If you don't mind, I know we're a little out of order, but I think out of fairness, I still would like to say something before you leave that chair. You know, Mayor, 12 years I've served with you, so half your time, and we've had ups and downs and agreements and disagreements. And like you said, we can disagree agreeably or agreeably disagree or whatever we want to say that day. And, you know, we've gone through a lot together. And I will tell you, like I said this summer, when you got your award for great governance, the Sam Emmett Award, you display what governance of a city should look like. When you, I could tell you over the years, I had no doubt in my mind that when you went out into the public and saw other folks and represented Arvada, you had Arvada in your veins and in your soul the whole time, and never once worried about, you know, our image being ruined or tarnished or not even being united and things. And your leadership through all of the good, the bad, and the ugly, like I said the other night, is appreciated by the council and the citizens of this city. So, you know, just, I also aspire to what governance looks like through your eyes. You show what transparency is and faithfulness and thoughtfulness and trying to create a well-balanced approach. And especially, and everyone has a voice on this council. You've always honored that. You've always secured that for us. I've never felt that I didn't have an ability to share my opinions and thoughts, and you protected that as mayor. So I just want to thank you for all your service. Your family, it's amazing to see them all grow up. You see mine's grown up, too.
Yes.
You know, and now you get to spend a wonderful time with your grandkids and family, and I wish you all the best and a continued friendship as well.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Ms. Mormon.
Well, Mayor, it's been a real pleasure to serve with you these past two years. And I've always, I always looked forward to our lunches together, because I felt like it was a great time for us just to catch up. And you always asked how I was doing, how my parents were doing, and my mom was having knee surgery. You were always checking in on me, and I just really appreciated that friendship. And I think that you do exhibit for us a great leadership that we've all talked about before, but just making sure that we're all, all our voices are heard. And I think I would say you probably have a sixth sense, that when we were in conversation and you look around, you read all our faces, and you're like, we haven't heard from Randy. And I just always appreciated that, to make sure that we all had an opportunity to voice our opinions on things and to be part of this very inclusive council that you created for us. So thank you very much for that.
Ms. Simpson.
Thank you. So just to echo the thoughts of my colleagues, you know, I've never made it a secret, I've said it many times, how much I admire how you manage the council. Everyone has a turn to speak. Everyone is treated with respect, with dignity. And I cannot thank you enough for that. That is exactly the template I am committed to following. I would not change a thing. And so I want to thank you personally for demonstrating that leadership and that mentorship for all of us and especially for myself. It certainly made my first four years on council a wonderful experience, as opposed to the kind of experience that would have sent me away running, which happens in some cities. So thank you for creating a productive environment. You're absolutely right that Arvada is one of the strongest and most thoughtful and achievement-oriented councils, because we're so busy, we get work done as opposed to trying to step all over each other. And so thank you for that kind of leadership, and you have my word, I will do everything that I have inside me to continue it.
Ms. Faray, you've got time for rebuttal.
I just wanted to thank you for setting the bar for the next generation and teaching me and what the right thing to do and how to act on council, and I really appreciate it. I wouldn't have been able to form myself in a public service standpoint without you.
Thank you. Ms. Marriott? Thank you. I want to go back a little bit to the first time I ran across Mr. Mayor. You may not even remember this, but in 2000, when I was a much younger man, I had just bought the house I now live in in Old Town and showed up at council one time to give public comment to a development proposal. And though I was full of misguided passion, both yourself and council member Steve Urban treated me greatly. And I always remember that, and I appreciate that. Over the years, as I watched the city council, I always agreed with what you said frequently. But mostly what I agreed with was how involved and how much, how hard you worked at it, it was clear. 2013, I have a funny story, and that was in 2013, when I was first elected the very first time. Mark actually supported my opponent. And early in that campaign, before my opponent jumped in, Mark was, had thought about supporting me, and I thought he would. In the end, his friend jumped in, and he had to support his friend. And I remember Mark calling me the day after the election and saying, hey, congratulations, you won, you did great. No hard feelings, right?[1184.58][1184.58][laughter] And I said, of course not. And Mark could not have been a better colleague or friend from that time forward. I really treasure the, all the Chamber of Commerce golf tournaments that we have played in. I will absolutely miss that. I enjoy the time that we've spent together, and particularly the times that we've worked together. I have a, I believe I have been to as many more of the State of the City speeches than you have, given that I gave one for you one time. And that was the biggest honor that I could have ever had. And I really appreciate that. I think you have been the best mayor in the metro area over your tenure as mayor. You were absolutely invaluable when we lost two police officers. There is no person in the Denver metro area who I would have rather been a colleague with at that time. You jumped on all the grenades for us over the last 12 years. There was never a time when you didn't step forward and take the criticism, the slings, and the arrows for all of us. And I think that's the measure of a great mayor. And so I appreciate that very much. I am, you know, you have been a colleague, a friend, and a mentor. And of all those, I mostly appreciate that I have a friend for life, and I will certainly be seeing you frequently. Thank you.
Well, thank you. That's very kind of all of you on all fronts. It is now time for Judge Kurtz to come down. And I will ask, Ms. Simpson, go ahead, and Ms. Simpson, if you'll indicate who's going to be joining you at the swearing in.
All right. I'd like to invite down my husband Stephen, our daughter Tabitha, my brother Nathan, and my sister-in-law Bree.
I'm taking my big gavel and going home.[1314.25][1314.25][laughter]
Good evening. I'm going to have one of you guys run over here. All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Lauren Simpson, do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the State of Colorado
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
and the laws of the State of Colorado
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
and will faithfully perform the duties
And will faithfully perform the duties.
of the office of mayor
Of the office of mayor.
for the city of Arvada
For the city of Arvada.
upon which I'm about to enter
Upon which I am about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.[1374.75][1374.75][applause] to call up the Reverend Shawna Ambrose, along with Judge Kurtz, to be sworn in for the District Two council member seat. Shawna is accompanied by her husband Nick. All right. Reverend Ambrose, please raise your right hand. Please repeat after me. I, Shawna Ambrose
I, Shawna Ambrose.
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the State of Colorado
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
and the laws of the State of Colorado
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
and will faithfully perform the duties
And will faithfully perform the duties.
of the office of council member District Two
Of the office of council member District Two.
for the city of Arvada
For the city of Arvada.
upon which I'm about to enter
Upon which I'm about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Next, I would like to retire Council Member at Large Bob Pfeifer and call up Council Member District Four, Bob Pfeifer.
Also, Bob Spamp, I believe, is joined by his wife Rochelle and his sons Kyle, Derek, and Chad.
All right. Mr. Pfeifer, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Bob Pfeifer
I, Bob Pfeifer.
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
Support the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the State of Colorado
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
and the laws of the State of Colorado
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
and will faithfully perform the duties
And will faithfully perform the duties.
of the office of council member District Four
Of the office of council member District Four.
for the city of Arvada
For the city of Arvada.
upon which I'm about to enter
Upon which I'm supposed to enter?
upon which I'm about to enter
Upon which I'm about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[1617.21][1617.21][applause] I wanted to say at large.
Yep. Congratulations. And finally, I would like to call up Sharon Davis for the seat of council member at large. And Sharon is accompanied by her friend Sean.[1652.51][1652.51][applause] All right. Ms. Davis, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Sharon Davis
I, Sharon Davis.
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the State of Colorado
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
and the laws of the State of Colorado
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
and will faithfully perform the duties
And will faithfully perform the duties.
of the office of council member at large
Of the office of council member at large.
for the city of Arvada
For the city of Arvada.
upon which I'm about to enter
Upon which I am about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Welcome to all of our new council members.[1744.83][1744.83][applause] Ms. Rush, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Simpson? Here. Councilmember Ambrose?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Faray?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeifer?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Mormon?
Here.
All right. Thank you so much. Now I would like to invite comments from all of the newly-elected council members. Councilmember Ambrose, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor Simpson. It's really an honor to be up here representing District Two. And I know that my election, the election was a very close one, and so upholding the outgoing may- I'd like to say for what I'll be focusing on is that my 20 years of experience is in policy governance with nonprofit boards, so I think a lot of my experience will be applicable there. And I think the key thing that most organizations need to focus on is making sure that they have a wonderful working relationship with the city. Because you are our most valuable resource, the thing we spend the most money on, and we want to make sure that you are very happy and fulfilled in your jobs and so, I promise to be a council member, to be an advocate on your side as well. And then lastly, I think being on a council means that you have to do a lot of stakeholder engagement, which is why I talked to over, well, I tried to. I, you know, went to over 7,000 doors again and again, asking people what they really needed in Arvada. And I'm really proud to have met so many wonderful people in District Two and I'm really proud of the city. I have raised my kids here and I want to give back to the city the way it has given to my family. So, thank you all for barely electing me. I promise to represent all of you.
Council member Pfeifer?
Well, thanks for dealing with my script. That's my fourth time. I should have probably known how to say it, but, you know, it kind of throws me from being at large and going to District Four and, you know, I'm really, I'm really, you know, honored to be elected by the constituents of District Four. I'm also, you know, my family is sacrificing a lot for what I do and, and my wife encourages me all the time to keep doing the good work for the city and the community. And, you know, I'm really hoping to, well, hopefully you guys are okay dealing with me another four years. I look over here and they're all staring at me, but, no, the team is great. I'm glad to work with you another four years. I hope to bring some continuity and institutional knowledge to the council. It's weird for me to say this out loud, but now I'm the most tenured council member when I remember being the, the junior in the group and, and didn't have gray hair then either. But I hope, I hope I can share that, that knowledge with all of you and I welcome all of you to the council, the new ones, and look forward to working with you all and continue doing the great work that the mayor was talking about. I think for all three of you in your new positions, this was, I know when I sat there, man, I panicked. I didn't know what was the next step to doing what I did. And since then, my love and my passion for my city has only grown. And again, I want to thank all of those that have voted for me and supported me through the years and I continue to do the best I can. And now that I represent the West Arvada, we have a different issues than the at-large, but hope to bring those voices here to the council while still doing the work as a whole council for the whole city. So, again, thank you everybody for your support and welcome all the new council members. And mayor.
Council member Davis?
Thank you, Mayor Simpson. And thank all of you. We did it. We made it. I walked almost 10,000 doors. I saw parts of Arvada that I didn't even recognize. It was so exciting. I was very well-received at the doors and I can only say that Arvadans are very compassionate and wonderful people. You know, we know what's going on at the national level, and I had no idea what to expect when I knocked on doors and what I expected, what I got was, on the 100-degree day, cold bottles of water. And on the 27-degree day, I got hot drinks and a warm foyer. So, thank you very much. This is a dream that I've built for over 20 years since I came to Arvada. I've worked on many of the, the committees here because I wanted to get to know what Arvadans think, what they're doing, and what is important to them. And I learned that by going to all these committees and it was very exciting and running everywhere. I remember seeing Don Wick out on the running trail and passing him up, myself and my little white dog. And it was, it's just an honor, a genuine honor, and I can't wait to roll up my sleeves literally and figuratively and get to work for all of you. Thank you so much. (applause)
So, when I was first elected four years ago, I certainly did not expect this. Goodness gracious, no. And all I can say is it's been the best four years of my entire life. When I ran for the District Two seat in 2019, I said to my husband, who, when we want to talk about family sacrifices, he and my little girl have had to go because it's bedtime and tomorrow is a school day. So, I thank him so much for all that he does for our family so that I can do this here with all of you. And when I ran four years ago, what I said to him is, is, "Well, if I hate it, it's only four years and then I will have done my public service. I will have done exactly what the founders of this country envisioned, which is where you step up, you give back, and then once your term's over, great job. You, you've done what you were supposed to do." That's what we saw from Council member Jones and Mayor Mark Williams. They both stood up, they both served their community with dignity, with honor, and with passion for several years. Goodness knows, Mark Williams quite literally set the record. And we could not have the city we have today if it had not been for their dedication and their leadership. So, I want to again, thank both of them for that and for setting that example for all of us. And it certainly set an example for me because when we came time to run for this office, I decided to take a chance, a very big chance. I was not allowed to run for two seats at the same time, so if I had lost this election, I would have been leaving the council. But it had to have been a bargain I was willing to make to try for this and I am so grateful that even if it was by the skin of my teeth, the people of Arvada have put their faith in me to hold this office for the next generation. And I promise I will work every day to prove that those votes were not cast in, miscast or cast in vain. I promise to work every day to earn your trust, whether you voted for me or you're not, or not. I am your mayor and I am here for you. And I also want to commend my very, very fine colleague, Mr. Marriott, who is a dear friend and who I respect tremendously. Thank you so much for being a part of what makes this experience so good and for your dedication to this city and your love for this city. It does not go unnoticed. So, with that, yes. So, with that, we try to make this evening very easy. We only have one official piece of business and that is to elect the next mayor pro tem. So, I, as the mayor, my first official duty was to contact every single member of the council, of the current council, to inquire about their interests. Ms. Ferre did not pick up her phone, but that's because she's in Europe. And so, for those of you who don't know, the mayor pro tem rotates here on the council every two years. It doesn't have to. Historically, we have had some council members, most notably, Council member Lorraine Anderson, who have had it multiple times in a row. But since then, it has tended to rotate every two years and any council member that is interested can throw their name in their hat. And for this particular election, only one council member, District One Councilman Randy Mormon, has thrown his name into the hat. And so, with that, I will open it up for nominations and to close all other nominations for consideration for mayor pro tem. Mr. Pfeifer?
I'd like to nominate Council member Mormon as mayor pro tem.
And would you like to close all other nominations?
Sure, I'll close all nominations.
Thank you. All right. Perfect. If the council members will vote. Ms. Ferre, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right. And with that, not everyone has voted, oh, I have to vote. Apologies, everybody. It really is my first time. All right. There we go. That has passed seven to zero. Mayor, Mr. Mormon? Oh, we still have the wrong names up, don't we?
So, why don't you do this? Why don't you go through and ask each individual how they vote? And I think we've, we've got the general impression, but just to make sure our record is clear.
Perfect. All right. Council member Ferre, you have already voted aye, correct? All right. Council member Pfeifer?
Aye.
Council member Mormon?
Aye.
Council member Ambrose?
Aye.
Council member Davis?
Aye.
Council member Marriott?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much. Council member Mormon, if you will step down, I will call Judge Kurtz up to administer the oath of office for the mayor pro tem. Yes. Please invite up your husband, Scott, and your dog, Oliver, to join you.
All right. Council member Mormon, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Randy Mormon.
I, Randy Mormon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of mayor pro tem.
Of the office of mayor pro tem.
For the city of Arvada.
For the city of Arvada.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
(applause)
Perfect. All right. Mayor Pro Tem Mormon, would, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Simpson. It is my honor to be serving in this role and, and again, as I said earlier, I really appreciated David Jones serving as mayor pro tem these past two years and learning from him and, and also Mayor Mark Williams and, and leadership. And so, I feel very blessed and honored to have this role and leadership and to serve with you all, this new council. And especially want to recognize our staff, our Arvada team. I'm excited to get to work. We have a lot of work to do and I know that it'll be a very big opportunity for us to, to start to tackle some new challenges and continue to work on the, the ones we've been working on. And so, I'm really honored and look forward to being part of that leadership team with such an excellent group of folks. So, thank you. Thank you all.
All right. And with that, I want to also give a quick extension of thanks to our team, especially for putting everything together tonight. I want to thank every single one of you for coming out. This is a packed house. We rarely see this many people in chambers, so thank you all for coming out for this evening. I would also like to invite everyone to join us down at the reception. Ms. Gillis, do we have any further business from you?
We do not.
Ms. Morris?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
All right. With that, we stand adjourned.